Good evening. On the consent agenda, 5.02, report and recommendation for purchase of six replacement police vehicles. 5.03, report and recommendation for acceptance of grant funds from the Virginia Commission for the Arts. 5.04, report and recommendation regarding a resolution adopting the FY-25 personal property tax relief rate. 5.05, Treasurers Reports, and 5.06, minutes of previous meetings.
I move the agenda?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving right along. Public forum. The public forum is the opportunity for town citizens, businesses, and groups to speak or bring to our attention any town government-related issues. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Groups are requested to have exposed person. If you are here for the public hearing, please hold your comments until later. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? Come on up, ma'am.
I will apologize because I'm not sure if this is the right place where I'm supposed to do this or not. My name is Cherie Toomey, and I work for Culpeper Machine and Supply down on Commerce Street. And we have been having quite a few issues down there over the last few years, and it seems to really kind of be coming to a head here of late. A lot of it has to do with the homeless. Some of the, we call them frequent flyers. Some of them may or may not be homeless. They just seem to be there all day. We're trying to figure out a couple things. Who's responsibility it is to clean up after them? We've had to have a few people arrested for trespassing that decided to camp out behind our building and is teetotal trashed. We keep getting hit up by the, you know, Culpeper Renaissance and everybody else, "Oh, can you guys clean that up?" Because all the tourism and all the, you know, the trains are coming in, they can see it. I'm not going back cleaning up somebody else's urine-defecated drug-drink-filled stuff. It's the property between, literally up against our building and the train track. We have multiple photos. We have videos of people drunk falling across the tracks, laying on the tracks for a while, people sleeping on the gravel next to the tracks, along with their partying against our building. You know, part of the building is almost 200 years old. It would be a really shame. It apparently caught on fire last summer. They were able to get it out very quickly. But a lot of people don't realize, you know, we have our welding gases and stuff in there, too. So that's, that's an issue in itself. We do everything we can on our end, but we can't control what's going on outside. We have heard no trespassing signs up, but it seems like it's just a constant battle back there. I'm not sure whose responsibility that area is. I know the officers have told us they're trying to patrol it more, but it, you know, you get one out, you get another one in, you get one out and get another one in. The rotation out front at the bus stop there at that parking lot, you know, I can be in my office on the phone, and my clients can hear all the profanity and fun going across the street. I don't know if there's no loitering laws, if there's any, you know, profanity on public laws. I don't know what all's going on, but it just seems like it doesn't happen. There's drinking in public. We've watched them pass the joints around. I don't know, you know, I don't feel like I can sit on the phone with the town police all day, and I shouldn't, not that I want to babysit, but, you know, it's, it's right there in front of everybody, and I'm not sure how many people are aware. You know, I could talk to my friends, and they have no idea any of this stuff goes on down there. I think somebody from the bus transit has said something about the bus stop finally. So some of the people aren't congregating in there. Now they've moved to the corner between the love sign and the bench there at the end of Davis Street in front of the depot. There's rude comments made to ladies all day long. You know, there's, there's fighting going on. There's, I mean, it's, it's atrocious. We've, I've got pictures you wouldn't believe. Today, there's legitimately, I think it was nine people standing at the bus stop, real, real bus riders that were going to use the, and it's funny because up until two weeks ago, you might get one person standing there waiting on the bus. They would wait up and down the sidewalk because they didn't want to be there around all the other people there. There's nine people legitimately ready, waiting to get on the bus, and one of the gentlemen comes with his backpack, goes over to the bush next to it, lays down, curls out, and goes to sleep for two hours. So there's women over there with their children, and you see all the pointing and the, you know, going on. So I don't know what else can be done, or, you know, we're trying to bring in tourism. We're trying to do what? We're trying to run a business. You know, they're yelling at us as we're trying to unload our trucks. There's our customers and stuff are going in and out. It's just not getting any better. I'm not sure what we can do about it and whose responsibility it is. Like I said, the, the cleaning issue. They, we've talked to the church. They've got cameras. We're trying to put more cameras up, but they are constantly in that parking lot, in the bushes, the trashcans. I couldn't tell you how many bear heinies I've seen where they ever drop them and going, using it for their porta potty all day. So the health and safety alone is a, is a big concern. So.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll work on that for you. I'll check with staff. All right, anyone else? Anyone else? No? All right, close the public, close the public forum at this time. All right. Let's do the R.
Yes, I move that Council reappoint John Flanagan to the Planning Commission for a new four-year term beginning September the 1st, 2024, and expiring on August the 31st, 2028. And I move that Council recommend appointment of Rich C. Faville to the Board of, of Zoning Appeals to feel an unexpired four-year term beginning immediately and expiring May the 6th, 2028, to the Culpeper Circuit Court Judge. And I move that Council approve the Public Safety Communication Agreement approved by the Board of Supervisors on August the 6th, 2024, with any changes as to form that may be approved by the town attorney and town manager, which will supersede the May the 5th, 2015 agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Public hearing on conditional use permit, Lewis.
Good evening. I'm Louis Pankati, Town Planner, and I'll be presenting the Amberwood Animal Hospital Comprehensive Sign Plan Conditional Use Permit application. This is a request for approval of a comprehensive sign plan for 121 and 123 Sycamore Street. The properties are both zoned C3 general commercial. Lot 11 is used as a veterinary's office, known as Amberwood Animal Hospital, and Lot 12 is used as a dwelling and for parking for the office. A comprehensive sign plan can establish the time, manner, and placement of signs, frequency of message changes, the materials, the hours of lighting, the height of the signs, the total number of square feet of a signed surface, and the number of signs to be placed on a site. With an approved conditional use permit for a comprehensive sign plan, signage can be placed in accordance with the plan even if it would otherwise not conform to ordinance regulations. The proposed plan shows three signs. The first is an existing directional sign that is located about four feet from the property line facing Sycamore Street. The setback requirement for freestanding signs is five feet for our ordinance. This plan would allow the refacing of the sign, but the size will stay the same. The second is a banner sign located on the Animal Hospital building facing James Madison Highway. Banner signs are only allowed as temporary signs and do not require sign permits. This sign was approved in error as a permanent sign. The applicant has agreed to remove the sign following approval of the conditional use permit and the completed installation of the new sign per the G D P. The proposed new ground-mounted sign will be placed on Lot 12. Amberwood Animal Hospital's previous sign was on this, that was on this parcel, was destroyed. It was considered an off-site sign as it was actually, the actual veterinary's office was not on that parcel. So approval of this CUP will allow them to place another sign on the property that the old one was on. This new monument sign shown here in the center is a 101-square-foot V-shaped sign. The maximum allowable square footage would be 180 square feet, so this is going to be less than the maximum allowable in terms of the total square footage. It will be internally illuminated in accordance with the ordinance regulations, and all landscaping will have to comply with ordinance requirements. Where the sign deviates from the ordinance other than the location is its height. The height of the sign is 12 feet, where the ordinance only allows eight feet. And here are some renderings provided by the applicant of what the sign would look like in relation to the signs around it. The CUP is being presented with the following conditions. One, that the signs on the property must be in general conformance with the Generalized Development Plan with the following amendments. The existing banner sign will be removed following the completed installation of the proposed V-shaped monument sign as depicted on the G D P, and the landscaping around the monument sign will consist of three feet of regularly maintained floral and shrubbery landscaping in every direction. Two, the height of the V-shaped monument sign will not exceed 12 feet with the exception of the support structure, which may extend 10 inches above the sign face. Three, the signs on the parcel subject to the CUP may only advertise business activity conducted on the subject parcels. Four, the sign shown on the G D P with the exception of the banner sign may be refaced provided the square footage and height of any sign does not increase. And five, additional signage not shown on the G D P is permitted provided it shall conform to the town code requirements related to signage or is otherwise approved by town council as a subsequent amendment to the approved conditional use permit. The ordinance states that council may issue a conditional use permit provided that it meets the following additional standards. One, that the use may not adversely affect the health, safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use. The applicant notes that the monument sign is a replacement of a sign that was destroyed, and the height is reasonable based on the existing signs within the immediate vicinity of the facility. Two, the use will not be detrimental to public welfare or interest to the property or improvements in the neighborhood. The applicant states that the monument sign will adhere to town code requirements for illumination, and it is in general conformance with other signs in the immediate vicinity. And three, it will be in harmony with the goals and policies of the future land use map in the comprehensive plan. The property is situated within an identified mixed-use, mixed-use business character area, which states that in relation to sites, the town should require all commercial signs to be monument-style with materials coordinated with the primary structure. It continues to note that signage and lighting should be consistent with the subsequently adopted signage and design standards. Buildings are encouraged to be consistent with human scale as it relates to their mass and size. It is also in the gateways and corridors character, and corridors character area and are identified as creating a strong impression of the overall community. In this area, there is a guideline to remove over time billboards and off-premise signs, as it is identified that these corridors should be kept free of billboards and visual clutter. And number four does not apply as these parcels are not in the watershed protection district. So I would be happy to answer any questions you have for me. The applicant's representative is also here in case you have representatives or any questions for them. Thank you.
Any question for Lewis? No. All right. Open the floor this time for public hearing. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Does anyone like to speak on this tonight?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of council and staff, by way of introduction, or for the record on Bob Hudson, I am honored to represent the applicants in this case. I'd like to introduce several people that are here. We have Dr. Harry Bouchard. If he would stand and be recognized. Dr. Bouchard has been here, if you'll stand up. Raise your hand if you prefer not to stand up. Dr. Bouchard has been an asset to this community and serving the Piedmont for 44 years, going on 45 years. And also with him is Dr. Mark Smith, if he would stand. Dr. Smith has been with Amberwood for the last nine years, and they are together, the applicants in the case. We also have Michael Wilson and Eric Sullivan here to answer any technical issues. Y'all, thank you so much. By way of background, this site is Zone C3. The old sign was a wooden V sign. It was demolished over two years ago by virtue of a violent storm. Because of the timing of that, the applicant cannot by code simply reinstall a sign. So the purpose now is to install a more modern sign, comply with the, the comprehensive sign plan ordinance, and to create sufficient visibility for the economic viability of the future of this business. The CSP, the Comprehensive Sign Plan, is a wonderful tool for the town and the applicants because it allows flexibility as may be needed given certain site conditions. It allows the town to regain, retain some control over conditions under the conditional use permit, and also allows the applicant some flexibility. I think you'll see that being the case in this situation. This proposal meets all town requirements for illumination, setbacks, square footage of sign face and landscaping. It does not comply with the height regulation, and that is their sole issue for debate in this case. The height allowed by code is eight feet. What is proposed is 12 feet. Yet you have the ability under the Comprehensive Sign Plan ordinance to create whatever height you would like to. And so the question is, is 12 feet reasonable? We argue that it is reasonable due to the, one important factor, and that is that for many years, there's a chain-link fence on the property to prevent dogs, I made the mistake at Planning Commission to say dogs and cats. I learned that cats don't obey chain-link fences, so I stand corrected on that. But with respect to dogs, we, it's there and needs to stay there because we don't want dogs running out on Business 29. That fence is six feet tall on average. In some cases, 6.25 feet. The sign face is five feet tall, so you take the six feet plus the five, you get to 11. So the 12-foot number is the closest thing we could come up with, and we think that's reasonable. I'd also suggest that the council may recall that some years ago, several years ago, the hospital case was approved under this Comprehensive Sign Plan for over 90 signs, for over 90 signs. You also will recall in March of this year, the council appropriately approved the Wellspring, which was a 20-foot pole-mounted sign. In this case, there's no net gain of any signage because the applicant has agreed, and there's a condition, that the banner sign that is vested will be removed upon installation and approval of this sign. So one sign comes down, the new sign would go up, so there's no net gain to the town. The procedural posture of the case is that this went through Planning Commission work session in June with the Planning Commission in July, whereby the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval to town council. And I'd like to conclude with several comments that I've heard over the several months that we've been working on this that came from either staff or Planning Commission members. I think they're pretty, pretty significant, and I'll just quote. Number one, the sign is a modest one. It includes a relatively small sign face. The sign face is 100 square feet. 180 is allowed, so it's about half, almost half the size of what is allowed. Number two, quote, "The sign is attractive." Number three, "The sign is reasonable, given the need for sign visibility, particularly as there's no entrance on Business 29, 1529 for Amberwood. Their entrance is off of Sycamore." So it is important to announce that even though there's no entrance here on this site, and you have to figure out where the entrance is, but on this site is this, this Amberwood Animal Hospital. It's been there for 44 years. The height is justified, given, as I mentioned before, the six, and this was, somebody else made this conclusion, and I would agree, that based on the six-foot pet security fence and the five-foot tall fence, the height is justified. Another member of the commission said there's no adverse effect on the area. And then finally, the sign, quote, "The sign fits the setting in relation to other sign, tall signs in the area." You'll see in your packet, if you look at the G D P, page three of the sign mock-up, you'll see the second photograph, and the staff gave you that photograph. There are a number of tall signs right in the area, and I'd like to enumerate the height of those signs. VDOT's three-way turn sign is 10.4 feet tall. The town's historic district sign is 11.8 feet tall. VDOT's 1529 left, 29 right sign is 11.8 feet. The McDonald's sign is 30.6 feet, 30.6 feet. There are two additional signs not in that photograph that are just a few paces to the east, which is VDOT's 25 mile-per-hour sign is 11.2 feet in height, as is the VDOT yield sign, also 11.2. So in summary, the applicant respectfully requests your unanimous vote to approve this application, subject to the conditions which have been vetted over several months, and the applicant is happy with those conditions. As always, I thank you for the opportunity to appear, Mr. Mayor, and we're glad to answer any questions, if there are any.
Any question? Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? This time, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right. Approval of conditional use permit for Amberwood Hospital, Lewis.
At the July Planning Commission meeting, the commission voted to recommend approval of the request with the proposed conditions.
Any question for Lewis?
Yes.
Can I have permission to make comments on the R?
They asked why it had to be 12 feet, and I believe one of, or the answer was that there is a fence located on it that it had to be above that. And again, with the, there was comment about relation to, especially the McDonald's sign, which still would tower over this one.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I move the R and R.
I second. Any discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Russell.
Aye.
Councilwoman Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yow.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blingey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Oger.
Aye.
Mayor Reed.
Aye.
Aye.
9.03, Appeal of Reimbursement of Tap Fees. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we had a chance to look at this recently, and so I'll, I'll try and keep the, the overview summary very short here. Essentially, Mr. Ketterer had purchased a property that had an accessory dwelling unit constructed on it some years ago when operating a business for bed and breakfast on that site. He was alerted to the fact that it had not received the appropriate approvals. He went through the process of a conditional use permit, was approved for that. As part of that, there was a tap fee associated for a discounted tap fee for an accessory dwelling unit. That fee was paid. Mr. Ketterer believes that that fee should have been paid by the prior owner, and has appealed to council to ask for a refund. This went to the 3P Committee last month, and at that time, the committee recommended that the full council consider offering a refund for it. We've since received some legal counsel that this may not be appropriate, and so the, the recommendation from legal councils, this be deferred back to town council for further consideration and deliberations, the appropriate course of action.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to send it back to the appropriate committee. Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Do we have to remove it in the public hearing?
Huh?
Do we have to take a public hearing off the agenda, or do we still have to do a public hearing?
It's not a public hearing.
It's an R and R.
It's a R and R. It's not a public hearing.
Oh, my bad.
That's all right. Everything's cool. Madam Clerk.
Aye.
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 9.03A2, town zoning amendment relating to townhouse private street. Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request to initiate a zoning amendment to the current language within the zoning ordinance in the residential districts. Currently, those districts do require the townhouses be served by private streets and private streets only. They don't allow them to be served by public streets. We have some developments coming in that cause some concern with this regard in terms of access. So I wanted to bring up an image just to show you what we're looking at here. These are two separate developments that are currently proposed. That which is outlined in green is a development called Summer Station. It's for approximately 220 single-family homes on the north side of town. That which is outlined in blue is called Jamison Crossing. It's proposed for 212 townhouse units. We also have within our code language that requires developments to have at least two access points via publicly maintained roads if they're going to exceed 80 units. The reason we have this is for public safety means. Essentially, if there's an accident that blocks off one of those roads, we want to make sure that we have a secondary access in case there's another emergency back within the subdivision. So in case there's a fire or something along those lines, we're able to get EMS services in. The key part of the language that causes some concern with this proposal is the fact that that has to be through a publicly maintained road, and private streets are not considered publicly maintained roads. So the current proposal here for the Summer Station development is that they'd have two access points, the one and two. The one, the orange, would be an extension of Duke Street. The two is the yellow that comes through the Jamison Crossing development. But unfortunately, that yellow road would not meet the criteria because it would be a private street. So amending the code to grant greater flexibility to allow for townhouses to be constructed, to be served by public streets would allow that Jamison Crossing or portions thereof to be constructed with public streets. That could then serve as that secondary access. They would be built to VDOT standards. The town would then be eligible to receive maintenance funds from VDOT for these streets because they would meet that criteria. Another concern that we've had in the past is that some of these developments that have been constructed with private streets over time end up coming back to the town and asking us to maintain them. We have three separate districts currently where there's additional taxing districts on these developments for the town to maintain the streets. So this would help to potentially avoid that by having public streets in these instances as opposed to private ones. So this is part of what's necessitating this. We do have currently in our, on our books, the planned unit development ordinance. This is what was utilized in Laurel Park, where they have townhouses and single-family detached to be served by public streets. It's simply a provision of the language specific to the residential districts, the R districts, that prohibit those townhouses from being served by private street, by public streets, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, so my question is, why was the, the ordinance or the rule created the way it was? What was the purpose? Do you know the genesis of that, and why, why, why do we need to change it now versus, you know, maybe there was a good reason that it was put in place, or maybe it was just something from that period of time? I don't know. But do you have any insight into that?
I can speculate. I don't know the definitive reasons. It may have been at that time, there was an anticipation of many of these townhouses being served by rear alleys. That was one, one concept that was done there. There's other instances where there can be difficulties in terms of things like trash services because of these, these being much closer together. If they don't have garages, it's difficult to store the trash receptacles. You do also have much tighter curb intersections in terms of the curb cuts with the driveways, so it essentially precludes on-street parking. There are ways that these can be done to meet the VDOT standards, so I can't speak to the specific reasoning at that time. As we're moving forward, I think we're looking to, in the zoning update, looking to allow these to happen, or certainly to allow the flexibility, if not require them to be on public streets. Fire hydrants would be something completely separate in terms of the streets, so yes, there would be an expectation that there would be fire hydrants throughout both developments to be able to ensure there's adequate fire safety.
Well, okay, so, so we're amending the ordinance. I gotta fix this little problem. I mean, how did it get this far anyway? I mean, if it's a, if there, if additional ingress egress is needed, how did this concept get to where it is now?
The applicants are aware of this issue. They've been aware from the get-go in terms of the conversations that we've had with them. This is their preferred layout. If necessary, they will ensure that there is that secondary public access. We've had extensive conversation, conversations with them, looking at other options. They do have easements in place that would potentially allow them to tie into Grandview. That would likely have far larger implications of an adverse effect on the existing school there, that intersection as well. So we would not be encouraged So we would not be encouraging them to go that route. The other thing is to, to look to redesign the Jamison Crossing to provide a public street down the center of it, to essentially provide that secondary public street, publicly maintained access, but that would then essentially...
Well, I mean, I, I see the fix there, but then all the other streets are still
Correct in that instance.
Right. So we're getting, we're amending the ordinance to say no more private streets except for this 220 development.
Essentially, in this instance, we were, we were looking to create the flexibility that the townhouse developments could be served either by public or private streets. In this instance, there would need to be the access of a public street to tie in as the secondary access point to Summer Station in the rear.
Yeah. That's a, it sounds like a Band-Aid, doesn't it? Not even a Band-Aid, more like Sky-Tape. Is any, I'm sorry, is any part of this going, I mean, at what stage is this? Is this going to...
This is simply the initiation of the amendment. The, the final language has not been developed. It has not gone to the Planning Commission for public hearing, and again, it would come back to council for public hearing before any, any...
But it will go to Planning Commission still.
Correct, yes.
Question.
So we have a secondary egress that has 270 degrees of right turns and left turns. Like, it, it just doesn't seem like a good layout for the, for the, for the land, the use.
Correct.
They're just, they're trying to cram as many townhouses as they can into a spot.
And, and again, if it had to, that is a, a road layout that would be permitted under a private street standards. However, under public street standards, the angles, as, as you pointed out, would not be acceptable, so they would have to come up with a, a, a new alignment for that particular street.
And just question, just to clarify, just to clarify, currently, it says that townhouses can only be served by private streets, and we're being asked to change that to, to give the flexibility for private or public. And if it is public, then it can't be the way that Travis just explained.
Correct. The alignment shown on there would not be acceptable as, that, that yellow segment would not be acceptable as a, a public street for that, that particular curve that's shown in there, being far too tight.
Mr. Mayor, just one last thing about the, about the process. Why is it starting with us and not at the Planning Commission? I mean, we're already the governing authority. If it goes back to the Planning Commission, it's gonna be received like, well, we don't really have a choice because they've already decided for us what the work is going to do, going to be, or what the end result is. I would think that the Planning Commission would have looked at this first and bring it up to us with all the explanations.
It, it, it really could, could go either way. Either the Planning Commission or town council have the ability to initiate an amendment to the zoning ordinance. I brought it to council as, as the governing body, wanting to, to ask your opinion of it before taking it to Planning Commission. Certainly happy, this is not as time-sensitive as, as other matters. I can certainly take it to the Planning Commission and have them work through it and have a, a final version to present before we, we initiate, if that's preferred.
I would prefer that.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, I don't know if I need to make a motion for that, but I would prefer that it start at the Planning Commission.
I would just concur. I just think this is very unusual. I, I can't recall since 2014 ever being approached directly by a development to ask for a change in our code, to fix something for them before it goes through the process. Just seems really odd.
So you say we don't need a motion for that?
We usually go back to planning.
Yeah. Oh, it's an R and R. All right, I make them, I make a motion that we send this item to Planning Commission.
Second.
Second.
Do you roll call Madam Clerk?
Did somebody make a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
Oh, okay, thank you.
He does that sometimes.
Councilor Brown.
Aye.
Councilor Blanty.
Aye.
Councilor Rogers.
Aye.
Mayor Reed.
Aye.
Councilor Amiga.
Aye.
Councilor Russell.
Aye.
Councilor Schmidt. Aye.
Councilor Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Aye.
Town council, town manager Monday report. Anyone have any questions or comments on it? Anyone has anything else? If not, we are adjourned.